Would you please stand for the federal agents? Paul, you want to lead us, please?
I'd like to lead.
I'd like to lead.
To the flag.
To the state of America.
To the public.
Would you stand?
For the nation, for the God, for the visible, for liberty and justice for all.
Agenda review. Any changes? Paul, did you have something you wanted to change?
Other than, no.
Okay, then. Anybody on board had any change they'd like to make?
Come on, sir.
Minutes from previous meeting, July 10th.
They've motioned to accept the minutes of July 10th. Second to the decree.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, five all. We'll comment. She did a nice job with these things.
She's enjoying her vacation.
That's right. She's driving across the country. All right. And we have to look at the consent agenda, the back of your agenda. Looking for motion.
I'll make a motion, we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five all. Informational, Community Power Coalition update. Paul?
I need to apologize, I did not have a chance to reach out to them today, so I cannot. I don't know if anybody has attended any of the regional meetings.
Didn't we?
If you have two appointments.
You are rep.
I'm not a rep, I was assigned to a committee, but don't know what that means yet.
Yeah. So my apologies, I will get you that.
Okay, so we'll put that on the agenda for next time. Thank you. And an update on deed of property, Chandler's Mills Road.
Okay, so the property on Chandler's Mills Road is going out to bid for sale. It'll be advertised at least Saturday. I don't, it's, we're putting it in their print editions and then on their Monday edition. It's, I'm sorry, I thought that that was attached here, but it was not. So it will be a tax collector's deed, a quitclaim deed of a tax collector's deed, so those are the legal deeding things. $100 minimum bid to cover the cost of producing the deed. Because of the status of the project, $15,000 retainer or letter of credit to be issued by the, or provided by the purchaser for the cleanup of the property. They have 60 days to clean it up. Upon cleanup and inspection by the town, the money or the letter of credit will then be released. Bids were due, well, the question was if the board wanted to be involved with the bids again, or if you wanted to do us an afternoon here. But looking at bids due the first week of August and moving forward from there.
The bids will be coming in the first week?
Coming in the first week of August, yes.
Cause you're not here.
I'm here the first partial week of August, I'm not here after that. And the other thing is, we can't accept bids before August 1st because of the notification provisions in the law. So we've notified the owner that we're selling it within 90 days, we did that back in March.
It would be the pleasure of the board for.
Can I have a question? Paul, can we, can we waive or include in that the demo permit to be included as part of the award? Just anything that we could do to encourage the person one to a bid, so we're not having to pay to have somebody bid?
Right.
Anything that we could do to help that property get cleaned up? So I would think that if, you know, we give them the time, but here, included in your deed is your free permit to demo and get that cleaned up.
We can absolutely do that.
You're done, you're done. Some of my questions.
You'll be recognized with it.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you. Just slap me around.
You're learning.
I'm learning. So, when you say there's a $15,000 requirement to be available, funds to be available for the cleanup, does that mean there's a requirement to clean it up?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure there's part of the sale states you must clean this property up. Do we have the parameters of what that means? Does that mean removing the mobile home that's, it's like it's.
Sixty days, removal of, I would think it would be removal of any manmade structures, trash, articles of personal belongings, et cetera.
Okay, but they can leave the slab down, if there's a slab, I'm not sure, there is or not, you probably know.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a slab, I guess that would be a question. I guess the slab isn't that offensive to the, to somebody driving by. If they wanted to do something further with it, they could, potentially. I mean, they've probably got more septic issues than they do slab issues.
Probably.
Although they are right down on the river. So, I guess, I had said all manmade, a slab would be, but we could certainly eliminate that requirement if there is a slab, I don't know.
It only comes up because it was a subject of discussion at the last planning board, and that there's a move towards tiny houses, and that that could possibly tend to be a site where someone will put a tiny house. And, but if the slab were moved, it no longer would have that. So, I'm not sure how we want to handle that, or not handle it, but, or if we just wanted to sell it and go through this planning board, cause there will be a septic issue as well, setbacks. So, I mean, I don't think that, you know, I don't know.
Jim?
I think there's a difference between cleanup and restoring the property back to pre-construction. You know, that would be removal of the septic, and removal of the slab, and everything there, which I don't think that's really not our privilege. I think we should see that that property gets cleaned up. You know, so the removal of the trailer and the debris cleaned.
That was one of our main goals.
And just stop there and let the owner do what they see fit to the property, but it needs to be cleaned. And saying removal of all manmade stuff, that's kind of going. I don't think we, I don't think we needed to go that deep. My thought would be just to see it cleaned and restore it back to a pleasant, drivable nature, ride viable nature.
Well, should we possibly, as part of the sale, let it be known, it be cleaned up, and it does not meet the criteria for putting something on? So if someone doesn't buy and say, hey, 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 I bought this, and I want to put something on here, but now it doesn't meet planning? So at least there's some understanding in the sale of the property that this is a non-conforming piece of property.
In the, I'm sorry, I have my apologies, but I can go up and print it if you want. There is something that says the town does not warranty the buildability of this parcel. I mean, if somebody wants to put a tiny house or a composting toilet in there, if it meets the zoning variance for a tiny house, then I guess that would probably be all right. So there are some options there, potentially. But I will, I will send, I will send you that, and we can work with the cleaning, the cleaning of it.
That's all. Good.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been a long time with this, and it's, it would be considered abandon. I made the statement at your last discussion of this, that are you prepared to pay somebody to take it, as opposed to them paying you money for it? If the home stays, there is a slight possibility that it could be rebuilt on. Even though we, you think the condition of it is deplorable, that is not relevant to what it might wind up to be. So you having it removed is a real good idea in your process. But then, does it become buyer beware? Because the lot is right on the edge of the Sugar River. From the unit to the water line is probably about 14 feet. Versus the 250-foot reach of the Shoreline Protection Act. I think it's doubtful that anyone can do anything there. Cause the Shoreline Protection says you can't cut trees within that close. You can only start cutting trees after the 50-foot mark, with their permission. So, all of this would be within that. So they can't do anything to the vegetation. So is it your intent, our intent as a community, to sell it? Do someone on fire beware? Or are we going to be? I don't want to use the word honest, because that means if you don't do it, you're dishonest, and I don't think that's happening. Are we going to make it clear that this lot has significant encumbrances on it?
We can't, like I say, we were probably more careful by saying that we warrant, we do not warranty any buildability of the parcel, but we can mention certainly shoreline, and DES and those type things.
And that's my point, to be as easy with this as possible, to encourage someone to bid on it by simply saying, remove the trailer, clean it up, and not having to restore the property. Big difference in cost, and what is it worth for them to do versus not do. So, either we're going to end up doing it as a town, very likely, or somebody might be encouraged enough by our forthright, like, here's your free permit, here's, you know, just make it look good. That's, that's my point. And I'm hoping that if we do it that way, somebody might be encouraged enough to buy it and do it for us.
Mr. Spaulding, was your, part of your rationale, we may have to give this to somebody, or is that what you were saying?
If you don't get bids, then maybe selling it for $1 to somebody else?
Right.
And there is a, on a butter that is across the road, that has expressed his willingness to go in and fix it. And he thought it would be a nice place to fish from. So, and Jim knows the fella, and I believe he probably spouts the same thing to you. So, if you don't get any bids, don't, don't give up. Just then say $1, but still, the mobile home has to come out, and the debris has to come out, which it would anyways, I believe, but at least then you have criteria attached to the removal. So part of the payment there would be the removal and cleanup.
So the question would be, would we want to drop, just drop the minimum bid to $1 and go from there? I mean, the $100 was rather token, we're not.
Our biggest aim is to get that thing cleaned up.
We're not recouping the taxes.
If a guy wants to pay $1 to go fishing, but then take care of all the others, that's not a bad deal.
I think $1 or $100 is inconsequential, I think, yes.
Okay?
Very good. I will, I will get the copies of the.
Point we'll take in, Mr. Spaulding.
Of the advertising.
All right. Action items. Waiver of fees, $250 security deposit, $300 rental fee, $300 custodial fee, for use of Opera House by the Richards Free Library Hail Awards Ceremony. They have to pick the person, I don't know. Just need.
Yeah, I can speak to that.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. Historically, the fees have been waived. Chris Bojalian is the awardeur submitting this year. A pretty big name in popular fiction, so we're excited about that. Yeah, and as far as I know, for as long as we have been using the Opera House, the fees have been waived for us, so.
That's correct. Do you hear a motion?
Question.
Go ahead, Jim.
Who does the cleanup afterwards?
That's my question.
We clean up, like, mess that is left, but the town person who's there with us for the evening puts away tables and chairs.
Okay, so pretty much the town will be picking up the custody.
Custodial.
Which we have.
We have.
Yeah. Do we have the staff to do that?
Probably do.
Not the select board.
I'm on that.
Unless you're there for the presentation and being around afterwards. I'll make that motion that we waive the.
Waiver of fees.
Waive the fees for the Richards Free Library for use of the Opera House on whatever the date is.
What is the date?
September, let's see.
September 23rd.
Yep, September 23rd, Saturday.
Yes.
Is that going to be operational by then?
Do I have a second?
Second, Matt.
Okay. Question was, is it going to be operational by then?
Yes, we, we, the original contract was the end of July for operational. I know they've been asking for any setbacks, as everyone has, but I would think certainly.
Motion, Paul.
Good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five all.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Let's see, authorize and fund development of shop drawings for community center. Paul, would you elaborate on that, please?
Sure. So, discussed last meeting, briefly, certainly a few meetings back. We're at a point in the, in the construction of the rec center, community center, where we can put out the shop drawings and get the, start the lead time on this deal, which is quite long. So my, and this is another thing I'm digging for, the contract is about $86,000, maybe a little more than that, but under 90. So we would like to go forward with that, which will then tie Brett Loaf to the project, and kind of tie in their subs also with our commitment there. I had a discussion with USDA today, and he fully supports this. He thinks this is the long dollar move, because of the lead time there, and it's not a huge risk in money. We have donations that were very specific in, they understood that their money funds may be used for something that could be put on a shelf for a period of time, if for any reason it stalled. So it's not somebody who's expecting their donation to go to brick and mortar right foot, right way. So we have the funding for it, and we'd like to move forward just to tie, start, start the process.
Questions from the board?
No question. So, if we do these drawings now, and we find that we do not have adequate funds for this project, that would be funds to build it contingencies. Then, what happens with the drawings? Do they have to be redrawn? Say, say, say we, say we need a modification of this building, we're going to just make it smaller by this room. I'm just throwing it out there, is that a scrap of all drawings? Or is that a reworking of the drawings, cause it's a lot of money?
Yeah, I think.
When we don't have, when we don't have all the money in to build the project.
Right. I believe we have, we have commitments-ish. Certainly, the state is the one that we've been verbally told by five executive counselors and the governor that they fully support the project, and it's just one where it's going to be back on an agenda. So I think we have the money committed, but if for any reason we did put them on the shelf, they would be fine unless we made modifications. And if we made modifications, they would need to be, they would need to be changed. Hopefully not the entire building. I mean, if you, if you shop draw the entire building and just the low section with the meeting rooms needs to be shortened by 10 feet.
Right.
A lot of that, those shop drawings will still be in effect, but you'd have to just modify those. So I wouldn't think it would be a total scrap job.
And it looks like most of the, you know, we're in fairly good shape with the funding at this particular point, but what about the four mil coming from?
So, again, I spoke with him this afternoon. I need to confirm with his assistant, Andrea, that we have everything in. The last time we talked to her, a couple of weeks ago, we had everything in. We just do that every couple of weeks to make sure. And then that commitment will come through. I am sure that the, when that commitment comes through, it will be obligated at the full dollar, but the payout commitment will be once you have all of your funds.
All of your funding.
When I spoke with him, we've got a couple of people that are donating for tax purposes in this year and then in next year. And he said, you're fine if you've got hard commitments, valid commitments. If somebody's already given you $50,000, and they're saying they're going to give you 50 more in January, that's pretty reasonable that they're going to. So they were okay with those type commitments also.
Keith, did you ever comment, you want to make, you talked to me a little earlier about that?
Well, just to kind of enlighten everybody, what I, what I told you. My position on it is, we've come this far, we've got, whatever the percentage is, 98%, 95% of the money. We're at a point where it's too late to say, we're not going to do it. I think we got to pull the trigger and just make it happen. That's my opinion.
Any other comments from the board? Jeff?
Yeah, I think we're closer to 95, 98. I think we're right at a, at about 100%.
I hadn't heard any actual numbers yet.
What do you say?
That includes the million, though, from?
That's counting on the million.
Including the million, we are, we are just over. I mean, it's in, we're putting it in owner contingency for budgeting purposes. So we start taking in, we find a little puddle of oil from the highway garage 40 years ago, something like. Whatever it may be. So we have a balance in owner contingency for any changes that we decide to make, but we are 100% funded through commitments and pledges.
So if, I want to play the devil's advocate here, should it come a million short? Should, should.
I'm looking at it.
Well, I thought we were already discussing it, I didn't realize, sorry, every time.
I just felt like.
Okay. So, say it comes a mill short. Does not go to vote, I assume, to the town, right? Building is half up, we don't get the million dollars. Where does that stand? What, what happens?
Oh, uh.
I'll leave it to them.
I, I would think that there would be building up before we have a commitment on that.
Right.
So, I think we might push some dirt around, but I don't know that we would, I don't know. This board would have to approve a contract before a million is authorized. If you would like to do that, I guess I can go on, but I would be surprised.
Kirk's had his hand up, and I'll recognize you, Jim.
Okay, you already know my position, that I think it's a sin not to ask us to vote for you going forward. Being as you're going forward, there is an escape hatch. If you find that you are financially unable to complete what you think the project really needs, in other words, you take, maybe you take out some amenities or something inside, but you're beyond that. You need more money. I think if you bring it to the community, I think it will be supported at that time.
I agree. You mentioned that to Paul today.
It's, it's the spare tire. Of course, there will be me saying, you shouldn't do it, you shouldn't do it, you should have done it right from the first go, but in the end, I have to vote for it. Because we'll have so much in it at that point, and to undo it would be a worse travesty.
I agree. Jeff?
Yeah, the contract with Brett Loaf takes us into account, where if we run short at some point, we can just stop construction at that point and come back to it later.
That's correct.
There's no penalty for not.
But boy, I don't want to get, I don't want to see a hole.
No, but I think if we're at eight out of nine million, we'll have an enclosed building. You know, and we'll have a new field there. You know, the interior may need a million bucks worth of work, but, but there's no penalty from the contractor.
Yep. So our decision tonight is whether to authorize and fund development of the shop drawings.
I'll make a motion, we authorize and fund the development of the shop drawings for the community center for an amount not to exceed 90,000.
Did you say 90,000?
Not to exceed 90,000.
And authorize me to sign all documents.
And authorize Paul Brown as interim town manager to sign all documents.
Do you hear a second?
Second, Matt.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Keep forgetting. Five all. All right. Adoption of Main Street Project Committee's recommendations for striping yellow signs. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Good job.
You'll train us yet. I feel like I'm, I feel like I'm in high school. So, Mr. Grand Mason from the state did reply to me today, he had been on vacation. And what he basically said was, I'll read to you, here, said, bids will, our advertising date will be 8/29, with bids being opened on 9/21. As soon as we receive the bids, I will notify the town, and our construction bureau staff will contact the town to invite them to the pre-construction conference, and will notify of scheduling, et cetera. And detached, there was this drawing that was attached, was basically a drawing that I'd already created with the help of Lobalys, with just the same notes on it. So they're aware of all the curb cuts, et cetera, but they're being, it's being waylaid a while. As I understand it from discussing with you, the work that's being done downtown here currently is from here to Kellyville. That section is not this section, so we'll just be a little bit later. I would ask, though, that we, at this point, that we will adopt the, I'll make a motion, that we adopt the committees and the board of selectmen at the times' decision to go ahead with the bidding of striping of Main Street for us to do ourselves, and for the immediate removal of the yellow crosswalk signs in there, in the area.
Do you hear a second?
Discussion first.
A discussion.
Well. Actually, the normal procedure is.
I'm out of order.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
We can have a discussion. We're going to get this right eventually.
Yeah, you'll, you'll train us yet.
If they're not doing it, can we do it? Is that possible within this timeline? Is there funds to do such an adventure? Do we know what that might cost, Paul? Or is that even a, do I even bring it up? Because I think it's-
Good point.
We're at a point where we prepped the lines going to the common. You know, we did a lot of things in preparation so we didn't have to rip up a nice, freshly minted Main Street.
Right.
Do we explore, should we explore the movement of those hydrants to put them either back or simple removal?
So I haven't been asked that yet. I would, if I were going to move the hydrants, I would move them to the center strip, because it makes snow removal easier.
That's a good idea.
Both for sidewalks and for plowing. Probably, right, you have access to either side of the road without shutting down both sides of the road if you're on the wrong side with the event. I have not thought about that, but it's something that we can inquire of. We would probably use an outside contractor at this time, given our current status.
Should that be done prior to the striping?
That should be done before paving.
Yeah, that's right.
Ideally, we would do it before paving. I think that, given the timeframe that Jeff had tonight-
September.
You're okay.
Thank you. I think, given the timeframe that Jeff had tonight, we would have time to get that spec and some quotes on that.
Yeah, because I'd like to see you cut. That was a good idea, but needs to be fleshed out a little. You're a good ball.
Which comes so close.
Yeah. Jeff?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A couple of things. A question for Jeff is, what exactly is the state bidding out? Just the paving?
The state is bidding out paving. I couldn't get him on the phone. Tried, said, please, he's back from vacation, I assume he's not going to have, maybe we'll get him further. I said, please, I need more clarification. Please, paving, and according to all the notes, it is restoration of the curbs. It is not the curb cut by where the fire hydrants, but maybe when the fire hydrant comes out and that sidewalk is kind of already being disturbed, maybe that's a good time we could do that at the same time, put our own crosswalk curb cut in. But it does, everything this board talked about and that was presented previously, it would be all of that. So restoration of the curbs where the crosswalks are coming out.
Have you seen the drawings?
Yes, he has the drawings, and-
He says they're okay?
Says, yes.
Wait, wait. Is the state going to do the striping?
State is not doing the striping. They will do sidewalks, sidewalk striping where, yeah, and that was already cleared. Hunter tried doing that.
Okay. As far as the hydrants, I think Paul, you should check with the fire chief, because last I heard was, we don't need both of those hydrants. One can be removed, and, you know, the other one is sufficient to sort of that area. And if it moves to the center, you know, you only need to move one back, too.
Yep.
Good point. Thank you, Jeff.
In terms of hydrants, when I was looking at this, and I know that, Jeff, you in particular, I've also gone down and looked at those hydrants, that the one in the Opera House, we've had to keep one of them, it was budgetary time constraint or whatever, the one by the Opera House doesn't appear to be in the way of plowing, because it sits in kind of a little L-jog right there, so it's not like a problem. But the one on the other side really is a big problem. And that thing, I have actually run into that, you know, by accident. Yeah, it's, it's not in a good place. It's a matter of time before that thing gets clocked off in the middle of winter. So if one had, if it couldn't go towards the middle, I would say that, I don't know what you thought, Jeff, but the other one is pretty, it's in a little L there, it's not in the spot.
Yeah, I'd leave it up to the fire chief as to which one.
So Paul, can you get in touch with the fire chief and let's move this idea forward, so we can get it done at the least we can.
Is there time to do that? Because they're already grooving the pavement over.
No, that's for the next section. That's not for-
This will be done until September.
Okay.
Not paved until September.
Good question.
I'll tell you, from looking at Main Street often residing there, that the way that the sidewalks are, the way it's plowed, it's always from center out. So the middle never has big snowbank accumulation, while the sides do. So often, I find that I'm out there with a shovel digging those hydrants out. So you get a little snow and ice on them, and they're buried, and when you have a fire, it's not the greatest thing, while the center, although you may think that the snow gets plowed that way, it never does. It's always scooped out and cleared, and there's nothing in the middle. So I think it's an excellent idea to put those in the middle. It's just so nice that comes up as a fresh-
Catch your ear.
I was just curious, moving the hydrants to the center would change the parking in the center. You'd have to block off some parking spots, so you'd lose some parking.
You may, but you might be able to tie it into, I'm wondering, I don't know how much flexibility. I think we have some flexibility there, but if you align the hydrant close to where you're putting a crosswalk now, so you've already lost a space or two, you might be able to get some distances in. Just an idea right now.
Good point. Thank you. You're going to move ahead and check on that, and report back to us when you come back from Nova Scotia.
There are no, stands for setbacks on the hydrant. So it's, meaning, you don't have to, you can park in front of a hydrant.
Not by ordinance.
Can't park.
Not by town ordinance.
Well, I just, like I said, with all the pictures that I sent in, hand over everywhere once in front of hydrants, so.
Our existing ordinance doesn't allow that.
But I think if you put it further down, you know how it comes down, and then it kind of widens out where the crosswalk is currently, that area in there, there's no parking in there anyways.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor for adoption of the Main Street Project Committee's recommendations for striping, taking down the yellow signs. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You can say something.
Wait, what's the motion? Confused.
To immediately take down the signs.
To authorize, to the adoption of the Main Street Project Committee's recommendations, striping, yellow signs, to immediately, to adopt it and take down the signs. Okay, that help you?
Aye. I'm going to aye that.
Okay, I'm going to repeat it. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Jeff?
I'm going to abstain.
Abstain?
I haven't seen the-
Okay. So it's four in favor, one abstention, Paul.
Now, can I just clarify one more thing? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
That doesn't have anything to do with painting the parking spaces, right?
Yes, we just adopted their, the painting of the spaces.
To quote, to be able to go on-
To get a quote.
Okay.
The state's not going to make them.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of that. I want to change my, to a no.
All right, so all those in favor? I'm going to take a roll call, though. Jeff?
Aye.
No.
Yes.
And you're abstaining?
I'm going to abstain.
I vote yes. So it's three.
1-1.
1-1. Okay?
Yes.
Originally, the striping was thrown in by the state. And we've really, other than the community, not made significant changes, except for the striping. So I had a conversation with the guy that you mentioned, and my feeling was, as long as we gave them the plan and time, it was the same. And so that has changed. I guess I would say, what's the matter with getting a little rough and saying, hey, you said you'd do it, and what's the significant difference? What's the reason that you're taking that from us? I believe it's a $4,000 to $5,000 paint job.
Yeah, I, go ahead, I have to clarify if I could. So one of the reasons why this is being put off and not being ground down right now is that an attempt was made by Hunter to get them for free. Unfortunately, in that attempt, things got delayed. They're not going to paint the stripes. They just aren't. They don't want anything to do with it. So it's been attempted, it's been tried again, they don't want to do it. If they do it, they can only do it the way that they do it. And that means we're going to lose a lot of parking spaces on Main Street. And they won't take our drawings, they will only do it to their specs, which don't take into account things like one-way streets that don't have, you know, it's just, it's a very sort of generic thing that they do, and it's just, it's not happening. It's just, they're not going to paint it. So Hunter made a really, really good effort to come back and try to get it done, and they just aren't going to do it. He doesn't want to do it. They will do the crosswalks. That's a lot of paint. So those are getting done. The ADA crosswalks, they will not do the one that is not going to be ADA, like with the Opera House rant, but they're not going to park to the spaces.
Second.
And just as far as the cost goes, I did contact one contractor, and approximately $20 per parking space with, you know, give or take, you know, 120 parking spaces. So it's not an exorbitant cost, but it will be a cost. And that's with the thick, the thick paint, not with the thinner paint, one that lasts seven, seven or so, seven to eight, 10, 10 years, in that realm.
Does that include the length of Main Street, including the lower section?
That would include the lower section.
Do you have that money somewhere? The answer is yes. You've got to-
We, depending, we haven't, you know, we're kind of like, still operating in semi-darkness. I'm waiting to hear what, you know, we've got to go out to bid. Worst-case scenario will not happen, and that is that we have a pavement, Main Street paved and it's black, with no striping. We won't let that happen, so. It's not going to be. Yes?
If I could just, well, I would recommend, the state, my understanding is the state will be painting the crosswalk at the top of the center strip. I would imagine they will be painting the Sunapee Street crosswalk, because they'll be paving, I don't know how far up Sunapee Street, but I'm sure they're not, they're not going to, just do the circle. They'll probably be doing the Depot Street crosswalk. I wouldn't recommend that we're going to go out to bid. I would recommend, once the state has determined who they are using for a contractor-
That we talk to.
We would talk to their contractor or their subcontractor and say, here's the rest of the plan, this is on Newport's nickel.
And he said that at one point. I will help you get a, get a person.
Right, but you're going to have somebody here painting crosswalks all around the traffic circle, just to have them keep going down the street.
Yeah. Yes, Jeff.
Can we insist that somebody paint the crosswalks up at the light for a change? They haven't, those things haven't been, those things haven't been done in a couple of years. I think the last time-
The light?
Right. It's a state requirement, but supposedly it's, you know, it's a special crew that does that, you know, versus the crew that paints the right arrow and the crew that paints the left arrow. I think last time they were done, it was a town crew that did it, but it is a state.
State option. Can you check into that, Paul? I know you've got a lot on your plate, but-
And also at Dunkin' Donuts, because I think that's the most dangerous one in town.
The what?
The one at Dunkin' Donuts.
If that is being paved by the state, being a state highway, they should, when they grind it all down, those should be getting painted in by them at the time. And I believe that is all state highways, so there shouldn't be any issue with that being painted in. I think to do it now, before they have to grind it down, first to spend the money on it, would probably be a waste of money.
No, no, I mean after.
He means after.
It should be being done, but I will make a point to clarify with the state that those are indeed going to be done by them, if that's the board's wishes.
Well, I've asked Paul to do it. We'd rather he do it.
Either way, I don't want to call him.
You two can work that out. Question?
No, just a statement. Just too important to assume that they're going to do when they haven't done it, so we just need to make sure that it gets done.
All right. Newport School District permit fees. Jeff, I believe you put that on there.
Okay, yes. So at one of your last few meetings, you waived the permit fee for the building of the CTE, the new CTE center. Prior to that action, the school had paid, or actually their construction company had paid $10,646.68 for the permit for the interior renovation work at the current CTE. And just trying to be consistent, it makes sense to me that that might also have been waived if it was asked for at the time, and that would then go back into their, the school's project budget, which I know is tight, or I believe is tight, I don't know.
So you're recommending that we return the 16?
Refund $10,646.68 to Harvey Construction for those permit fees, and I have been told by Ed Ement, who's kind of their project manager, that that will be a direct credit back to them.
I'll make that motion.
You hear a second?
I'll second that for discussion.
Question?
Just a question, Paul. What impact did the town, what would we have an impact for waiving that? Because there would still have some inspections and things of that sort. I've got no problem waiving it, I just, what does that mean to us?
We will have some costs with inspections into the coming year. That was actually received as revenue in last year. We are over budget, or we are over budgeted that, so we will still have the over budget after that refund. So I mean, we would be bearing the cost of some inspections, much like you will be with the CTE building.
Thank you.
Yes?
So when we say inspections, are we talking about inspections by town employees, so they're already paid? Are we talking outside inspections?
Well, we are currently contracting with a construction person as the building inspector a few days a week, so many hours. We're still trying to figure out what the sweet spot is, hours per day, and I would think that would be done during that time, so I'm not necessarily calling back for any specific inspections, although maybe there is, I think in that project, not so much. I could see on the CTE building, we're pouring concrete today, it's not one of your regular days, we'll probably bring somebody in for that. But I think just the general renovations at the VOTEC require many specials, so it would be part of what we're already paying.
Right, because that's basically Alan's job, that you're subcontracting out now.
Alan's job, we're currently subcontracting.
So just taking his money that he's been paying, it goes to somebody else. I just, you know, we're talking about fees, you know, that's the way I look at it, with employees, you know, if they're already on payroll, you know, what is it? It's just shifting, shifting over, so it's not, doesn't incur an over expense, extra expense.
Go ahead. For the public that doesn't know, the guy that you're bringing in is a super knowledgeable. What's done at Dartmouth College is done under his supervision from the beginning to the end. And so with the CTE, maybe the contractor and et cetera can make it to times that he's here.
He's here today.
And that would benefit both the town, because I don't know who you would get to replace him, that would have the expertise that he has.
I would announce we do have a vacancy in the building inspection division, and if anyone's interested in applying, the applications on, and the job description is on the town website.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion on the table to return, how much was it, Paul?
$10,646.68.
To the contractor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Five all. NCTV and Town Newport Agreement. Would you like to speak to that?
I'm here, as you probably all remember, in 1992, wearing contest, just coming to all the towns. They had a franchise fee, and our town voted, it was actually Article 31, to take the franchise fees and to dedicate it to a public access station. And we've been doing it since 1992, and every three to five years, we have a contract to solidify that those franchise fees go to operate at NCTV. And it seemed like just yesterday, we negotiated this contract, but it wasn't, it was three years ago, and it's 5/23. I gave Paul a copy of our contract that I think buried, that I think it was Jeff, and Todd Fasson, myself, and Peter Franklin, hammered out two years ago. Nothing different on the contract, other than Paul asked that we change some of the tapes of which, once you guys get the franchise fee transferred to us, which was very amenable. And that's the only difference in the contract, you were asking that you folks would gratify that for the next week. Todd Fasson, myself, and Frank, and Emmerdale, two years ago. Nothing different on the contract, other than Paul asked that we change some of the takes of which, once you guys get the franchise fee transferred to us, which was very amenable. And that's the only difference in the contract, you are asking that you folks would ratify that for the next year.
We're in a position, all you, none of us have seen the contract.
It was sent out over the weekend.
Okay. I haven't seen it, but I'm familiar with the last one.
Yeah.
Because we did hammer that out.
We did hammer that out, and the arrangement does not change, it's the same contract, other than...
Just a few minor changes, live, more requests.
So what is the pleasure of the board? Do I hear a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion, that we ratify the agreement between the town of Newport and NCTV for the period of July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2026.
You're second?
Second.
All those in favor? For discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Get this running right. Thank you.
Your probationary period.
What's that?
Your probationary...
No, but we haven't run it like this. I mean, you're supposed to do it a certain way, and I'm trying to get that done.
You know, Barry, at the zoning board, we have a cheat sheet to follow for the stuff, so maybe one could be created for everybody.
I think I'm getting a hold of it, thank you.
Your motion, Jeff, was to approve, was that also to sign?
Yes, please.
Yeah, approval and sign.
I heard you say sign.
Okay, good. I did now, I guess, too.
You all settled that, Paul?
I am all settled.
You're taking notes tonight, or doing something with it?
No, Riley is, Riley is gonna...
Riley's in a car somewhere.
She is in a car somewhere, but she will be watching the meeting. I mean, I'm taking basic notes, but...
Good, thank you. Okay. Under action items, adoption of new sewer rates. Paul, would you like to elaborate on that?
Sure. For the last six or eight months, we've been talking about the wastewater treatment plant and the bond that was approved at town meeting. Along with that discussion, there was a discussion of phasing in the water, the sewer rate increases. I'm happy to say water rates are stable and will not be changing immediately, not be changing in the foreseeable future. Right now, if you do not phase it in, we'll need to adjust the rate by 175% in 2026. I, through the process, it was discussed, 30% increase this year, 30% increase next year, 25 the year after, and then 25 the year after that. Works out to be 115, no, it doesn't, 50 and 60, 110% increase in the rates over that four years. You really end up at about the same number in 2027, you're about the same number. But this will start the funding process and kinda ease it in for people. It will take the rate from $12, the current rate of $12.85 to $16.71 for the sewer.
Would you repeat that?
$12.85 to $16.71.
That's what?
For sewer.
Per?
Per 1,000 gallons. And this would take effect, they start reading, they're gonna, they've held off reading meters for July until tomorrow. So when you turn your knob tomorrow, it would be at the new rate billed in probably next January, is when that bill would come. So...
So the reading they're gonna take starting tomorrow would be at the old rates?
Reading they're gonna take tomorrow is at the old rates. Any water that's run from tomorrow on would be at the new rates. Those readings will be in November, and then those are billed just after Christmas.
Just after our tax bills.
Just after tax bills are due, yes. We try not to have them on the street at the same time.
Is there any portion of this that is because we need higher sewage rates outside of this build? Or is this solely tied to the $10 million bond?
I would say, we had, we had been talking about sewer rates, well, we originally started talking about sewer rate increases back the first time we did this build. And we started phasing in those, but then we stopped when, when we weren't seeing completion of the project and needing to repay the bonds. We stopped those increases. I haven't run them, back in March, I think I ran them, and if we didn't do the sewer treatment plant, but we still kept operations and other projects that we have on the horizon, we needed a slight increase, not this big an increase, but we did need a slight increase a few years.
And then also, you said 115%, but that is, right?
110.
110. But it's compounded, it basically is not 110, because we're compounded, so we're 100, a lot more than 110.
Like I say, in, in 2026, you are about the same rate.
175. Right. And probably not, with the 30% increase, I mean, that's gonna have to happen anyways. I would just, for sure, you need that, that, it was never really fully ironed out, what that amount would be on a 20-year bond versus a 30-year bond. I believe that we chose a 30-year bond on this, and that if it's necessarily going to be the 175%, and that maybe we could, I would be very interested in making it a little more clear from a mathematical perspective, exactly what that is, because I ran an amortization schedule at 30 years of one and a half percent to be around $380,000 a year, approximately in payments. And I find that to be not an overly high number for such a significant rate increase. But for, for myself and the public to see that, I'm a huge water user, so whether I decide to keep my business open or not, it's an astronomical sewage rate, and I'm not complaining, it's, it's the way things go. And if I can't exist, I don't exist. It's, that's the way it is. But it, to me, something seems off in the math. It doesn't seem like a massive payment at 380,000, but maybe that's why I'm asking, if there's something else there in the usage that pushes that so high.
Go ahead, Jeff.
You know, the thing is, 30, with a 30-year payment, the thing is, the principal's the same, but we're paying an extra eight or $900,000 in interest over that last 10 years. And as you said, you know, the compounding and all, it's actually more. But also, you know, the thing I try to consider is looking 30 years out, what's, what's, what's the current value of that money then? You know, the fact, you know, you know, a $300,000 payment in that year 30, you know, is probably, you know, like, probably, say, $160,000, $180,000 in today's dollars. So another thing that I wanna mention, Paul mentioned that the water rates look good. But in the past, when we've looked at water and sewer rates, a lot of times, we've had, it looks good, looks good, it's like, oh no, we need a 25% increase. So, and especially...
That happened the last time.
And it's happening to sewer here, but we have a specific reason. And we also heard during our deliberative session and such a discussion of this, a lot of people saying, you know, you got miles of piping on Unity Road, and at some point, perhaps even though we don't need it, quote unquote, right now, we should probably consider a small annual increase on the waterside also, because we do still have a lot of piping in town to address at some point. And the cost of doing that's going up, if we're gonna start building up any capital for that, you know, instead of hitting people maybe in three or four years, oh, people maybe in three or four years, oh, we need a 40% increase.
There's something to consider and discuss on another...
I think it needs to be considered. We ran into this the last time, rather.
Right. It's like surprise.
Paul came out with a number that we need to have, and it was quite upsetting to some people on the board.
But a small annual increase?
And part of that was because we hadn't increased. And I, I like the idea of planning smaller increases, so that, you know, 30% is gonna be tough on some people.
It's tough.
A lot of people. So, go ahead, Paul.
So a couple of things. One, there is a hole in the math that you're doing, and that is operating expenses. Off the top of my head, I believe the annual operating expenses in 2026, when the plant goes online, is $468,000. Through, the three main drivers of that are staff, I think we need two additional staff members for this, electricity, chemicals, and residuals, so, so there's, there's an extra half, almost half a million dollars that is beyond the payment that factors into that, into that equation.
Is there?
Yes.
Is it possible, Paul, that we put together for our next meeting, maybe a, as Jeff mentioned, a mathematical show, so that we can, so for the viewing public and the people that are here can have a better understanding of what's needed, what the gap is, and how we plan on covering that gap through these adjustments? So we can have a better digestion of what these percentages are gonna be going forward towards, and how we are bridging that gap?
Yeah, I can show you that. I, it won't be your next meeting, but your second meeting in August.
Yeah, we, we've gotta talk about doing some adjustments.
Yeah, certainly, we can, we can go through that. I can show you, we have the water rates standing. We are looking at 10 years, and the water rates do look good for those 10 years.
I, I do, and I hope people that are looking in or knew about this, that they come to the next meeting about this, because I, we need to have public input. This is, this is going to be an issue for a lot of people. So I don't feel we're in a position to, to vote tonight.
Jeff? Aren't we supposed to have like a public hearing for increasing rates?
Yes, I was using the public hearing that we did during the bond, because we did talk about rates at that point in time. My only, my...
Go ahead.
My only concern is, right now, we're at a point where it's, it's the cutoff for new readings, old readings. So if you did delay it, that will change things for us for a little bit, and I'm not sure how we would approach that. We'd either delay the increase to the next bill, which then changed the math, changed the math substantially, but a little bit. But on the flip side, we know we, we need at least 30%. I mean, we need, over the next four years, we need 175%. So, and any shift in, I mean, if you came back and said we wanted 20% this year, the long-term impact that, because of compounding, really does change that.
Which is what we did the last time.
I've got a good graph that I can show you.
Okay. And I, we need, we will be having a discussion about when our next meeting's gonna be, tonight. So we're going to, at this point, yes, Jeff?
I do have another question for...
Go ahead.
Prior to the vote.
We're not voting.
So I think that it wasn't made clear deliberatively, that, that this new system that we have to have is gonna cost an extra half a million dollars a year to operate. That's pretty significant. And for the public not to understand that and to know that during a vote, I find preposterous myself. I think that, at least in my opinion, the new system meant more efficient, less expensive to run. That's an incredible amount of money. I can't imagine a sewage rate that's gonna be above $30 per 1,000 gallons, which means a shower in this town is gonna cost 50 cents to take a shower here. It's just, I'm shocked. I truly am. And I would venture to guess that that doesn't happen in other towns. I mean, that is an incredibly high rate. And what it could do to, we worry about development, what unit's gonna come in here and look at that sewage drain and say, I wanna build in Newport, I wanna do anything in Newport. What factory's gonna come here and say, I wanna do something in Newport? That is just out of control. I'm sorry, that is outrageous. I don't know what can be done about it, but that is too much for people to bear. I just can't believe that it's, it's a half a million dollars more to operate, extra people, extra chemicals. Where is that a good thing? I don't know. I'm venting, but it's upsetting to me.
Yes?
In the hearings, that was covered, they talked about the cost of operation, that, that was discussed, and I'm aware of, and I sat in on at least one public hearing here, that those, those fees and the cost of running that system, and they, actually, they picked a system that was cheaper to run than other options, because the other options were, you know, the, the materials associated with running it were much more expensive. So this was the, the best option, the cheapest option.
Least worst.
Yeah, least, least worst. Least worst.
I gotta tell you something feels off. Something does not seem right, and I just, this town will suffer for a very long time because of it.
So Paul, at our next meeting, you will have more information and charts that people can see about the cost. I feel uncomfortable voting tonight on this, particularly if the public doesn't have a clear understanding of the process.
So what we will do is, we will start reading meters tomorrow, we will delay any increase until the November, after the November reads. It's gonna change the math a little bit, but not substantially.
Herb?
Just a quick question, outside haulers that come in and dump, are they billed by gallon, the same as a presidential user?
Yes, yes. And then, and the rate that, the rate that I pay as a septic user or haulers is substantially more than what we're talking about here.
Is there gonna be an increase to them also?
We haven't looked into that, but probably, probably.
Good point, Herb. Yes, Keith?
I know there's a lot of people that are outraged at the cost, but this is a project that has been put off for a number of years also. And unfortunately, we're the ones getting stuck with it. It's gotta happen. It's not the end of the world for me financially. I don't wanna pay more, but we're going to. I'm in favor of the, the whole thing. So I just wanted to mention that.
Okay.
Keith, that came from us purchasing something that didn't work. And that's where the problem began. And I'm hoping that we have not entered into this as eager as we must have been back then. And back then, what we should have done is bought what was proven and worked. And here, I hope the same thing exists, proven and is working. I called Paul, and there is only one other in the state.
Using it?
That, that he knew of at that time.
Yeah, I think there are a couple of them now.
And, and it was a smaller system, so it may be late in the game, but we need to know if this one's gonna work, or else it's catastrophe.
Paul?
So the process that's being built is a sequential batch reactor, an SBR. They are common throughout the Northeast and the United States. It is proven technology, fortunately. I will say, back in 2011, where, I think I might have been sitting at that point in time at that table, but I was involved certainly with that, we did buy, unfortunately, a...
Pig in a poke?
A pig in a poke, a bit of a lemon. We believed a, an engineer that is, if not the largest, the second-largest engineering company in the world. Unfortunately, we got the B team or the Z team, I'm not sure which. And, and we bought into, no, this technology is gonna work. And we found out, we were lied to, and that's why the, it was settled before the court got a hold of it, but it was very ugly for four or five years. The thing that we passed over, so we went with the, the 2 million, the $3 million disk filtration system. The thing that we passed over was the $14 million SBR that we're building right now. And we did it because we, we thought we were saving the town money and getting what we needed. If had the, the filter process worked back in 2011, we would still be here today looking for something because of changes in the permit for nitrates, nutrients, nitrogen. So we, we still would have had a problem. And at that point in time, we asked, all right, if we get a change in permit for nitrogen, what are we gonna have to do? And they said, we're probably gonna have to build the sequence, the batch reactor, the SBR. But this system will work on the back end of it. So we were, all right, well, we'll delay until we get a permit. We have got the permit now. It is becoming a, a standard permit in the state of New Hampshire for anything dumping into the Connecticut River Basin. It's not as bad as anything dumping into oyster... It's not as bad as anything dumping into Oyster, Oyster Bay. Great Bay. So it's bad. I think that we're going to start seeing sewer rates bad all over the state. We may be first, but we will not be last. So I understand the concern of it, but it's also, right now, we are between a rock and a hard place. We do have the administrative order from the USDA, from, I'm sorry, from New Hampshire, but through the EPA. So we are, yeah, that's where we are.
One more. Mr. Green?
One question probably asked. You said, there's one or two in the state already, Paul? Have we knocked on their door and said, "How do you like your system"?
We have, we have. And they're very happy with it. We chased them when we first selected this engineer. That's who they were using for recommendation at town up north. And yeah, it's working. It is unfortunately more labor intensive than our current system. And our current system doesn't meet permit. We've been in violation since 2009, I think. So.
Herb, do you want to comment?
Way back, the drains from the road sidewalks, et cetera, were rubbed through the sewer treatment plant. Has that been solved now? Or are we still?
My understanding is the storm drain system has been separated.
Has been what?
Has been separated from the septic sewage system. I can tell you, during the current rain last week, we pumped 3 million gallons through the system. So we still have an INI issue, infiltration and inflow issue in this town, which is money, especially when we get to the SBR process. So that's something we'll need to continue to investigate. We have been investigating annually. Part of the EPA administrative orders that we will continue to investigate. We are lining sewer. We're using something called slip lining process now, which is essentially you get down through, you clean this, you put a camera down through, you clean a tube, and then you blow essentially bubble gum or it's a, some type of a poly mixture that then seals. It hardens and it seals those lines to stop the INI. So we are addressing it as best we can. At some point in time, we may figure out where the biggest problem, actually up on the hill, first, second, third, fourth, that knocked into, doing that project really knocked into our INI issue. But now the lower section of Spring Street hasn't been done. So there are places that we know we have issues and that's one of the ways to save us some money. Because we won't be pumping, we won't be cleaning, potentially cleaning bean water.
So is it the position of the board that we, well, we put this off until next meeting? And here's my concern. I don't want to get too involved with, I want to stick to the reasons for the 30% sewer rate increase, okay? As best we can. Okay? Everybody in agreement?
Yes.
No.
I just didn't vote.
Well, you didn't have to vote, I just asked you to agree. All right, let's move on. Appointment of Town Manager Search Committee members. I played a wait at night trying to figure the best way to do this. Talked to Paul, talked with some of the members here. And here's where we are. We have 12?
12.
12 people. Can you name them or would you rather know?
I can if you'd like.
I'd like to, Jeff.
On the last page of the... Oh, is it in? Oh, that's right. Thank you, Jeff. So for citizens, Giddy Irwin, Chad Howe, Bert Spalding, Christie Whipple, Ken Dennis, Dick Wenzel, Herb Teller, Tim Beard, Ben Bartlett, Todd Fretz.
I make it easy, take my name off. There's more than enough. If you didn't have enough, more than enough. So give me one more.
There are two missing.
Here we have Jane Solson and, they were, but they were both...
They're chamber, they're...
They're chamber, and not just members, they are, they are actual chamber committee.
And that will be chambers voting on Friday for their representative. So those two additional, Jane Solson and Mallory Starcher, had come in as resident requests.
But they're in the chamber.
But they're also, they also sit on the chamber board currently.
Okay, so here's where we are, ladies and gentlemen. I am going to be asking the board, we have the names, and Herb, you are the best, have you truly want your name reviewed?
Yes, because my idea was just as the spare tire, if you can't fill a board, but here you've overfilled the three positions. So you've got a good selection.
You'll be here anyways.
So I'm asking that the members of the board, can you get a second so that everybody has in front of them the people? And I'm asking you to give your, choose your top five candidates for the position and list them down in order, rank order. And Paul will pass them to Paul, then we will take a look and see where everything is at that time.
Do we do that tonight or is that tonight?
Is that off the sheet here?
We're not, I mean, I guess we could do it in a non-public setting and come back. I was planning on waiting, but I suppose you're in the board.
I just have a suggestion. I could take Jeff's list that he had put together, run off some copies. We could do that here.
We each have a copy.
Yeah, send it off to Paul and by the end of the meeting, we can have our one, two, three.
That's what you choose to do.
The reason why I say that to the rest of the board and to the community is that every day lost, right, every week lost is important to us. So we have a condensed timeline to begin with. So to kind of slow roll this and go, you know, no, we had the ability to do it tonight. My suggestion would be to pick it tonight and then we could use these next two weeks to start lining up our meetings, not pushing it back two more weeks.
So are you saying we're going to sit here like during open forum and write them down? What are we going to do?
Maybe by the time that we come back out of communications, that Paul might be able to tell us who our top three are.
I believe that you're going on non-public because of the reputation of whatever. So if you take that list of 12 yourselves and have your fistfight there and at the end, three of them survive. And that doesn't put you in a political position.
Right. And that's what we want to try to, I wanted to avoid is getting into reputation of people. Well, I don't want that, son of a gun on the board, you know, on the committee. But have it so that, the main point that I'm looking at is we want people who have the time commitment to do it because it is going to take time. People should have an understanding of the town and how the town operates and build into the things I was... So Paul, I like the idea of going in a non-public and coming out. I don't want to sit here and...
It's not good for the board and it's not good for the people who are volunteering.
No, it's not.
So when you come back with the three, you take your vote and there's no explanation. That's, you've made your decision.
Mr. Wenzel?
You take my name off too.
Really?
Yeah.
All right, so we'll go into non-public, move that into our lengthy non-public session. Yes?
So does that mean, that meets the concern that after non-public, then that committee, those committee members will be formed and we can officially then start meetings? Or does it have to wait until the next?
No, I would think that you will, that will be the committee. I'm assuming that you're going to honor the request of the Chamber of Commerce, so whoever they put forward will automatically be, at least that seat. I would think you start meeting next Monday.
Okay. I think also just for the...
Are you going to be here?
I am.
So just for the sake of the public, that they understand that this is a, the members here will be filling this out. We don't necessarily know what other people's choices are and in the end, that will be sort of a blind...
We're going to go into non-public and we will come out with three people.
Right.
How's that? Okay? Did you have a comment?
That's perfectly fine for you to, your decision of listing the three names has to be done in public.
That's correct.
So when you come out, we reopen.
We'll listen to that. Yep. Thank you.
So what is reputation, is that a seat?
Seat.
So we have four, four non-public situations.
I brought some of it with me, Jim, tonight, but I didn't bring it all, I don't think.
No, it's a two seat. That's what I figured, I just don't have the book here.
All right.
Well, we could have, used to be able to get it in the back room area until...
We got it right here.
Yeah, I've got it in my book here too.
We had it, I've got it on here.
Thank you. All right. Open forum. This is a chance for people in the public to address the board with any concerns, comments that have not been addressed during the... Jenna? She did beat you.
The first thing is I just wanted to thank the board for waiving the permit fees. I appreciate that. The second thing is I've been asked to ask about the phase three permit, how that approval process is coming along. I believe we submitted everything now.
Guess you have.
Didn't know if there had been an update, that's all.
I cannot give you an update. Our contract building inspector was in this morning.
He was trying to find it.
He was trying to find it.
Yeah.
And we're not quite sure where it is in that office.
Okay.
And I don't think it has been reviewed yet, so we're...
Okay, so if it can't be found, could we just let it?
I will find it. It's there. Alan, I talked to Alan about it the other day. It's there. He just walked in today. First day.
Oh, no, that's fine. It's just if you need anything else, we just will submit it, so.
And this is a, I mean, it's a main emphasis to get this done.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Open forum. Herb?
Okay, I'm going to take up a lot of your time tonight. I want to draw...
Herb, would you mind if I, Kathy had just a quick comment and then go listen to you? Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to update everybody that last Thursday. Taxpayer lawsuit went in front of Department of General Government. It's in the lower court. And basically that was about swept and the state did argue the fact that the plaintiff is about swept. So basically the judge is going to be making his ruling, looks like with a convale case, basically unconstitutional audio swept. The caveat there is that he does rule that swept is unconstitutional, which I believe he will, that will really reopen the opportunity to have a true statewide property tax, in my opinion. So that, I just wanted to let you know the taxpayer lawsuit is going forward and let's just hope for some good news.
And as a town, we're very fortunate to have you involved with this and keeping us updated.
And I would say the lungs for being part of the...
Okay, good, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Good. Herb?
Okay, I'll preface this with, this is me showing the recently departed town managers inequities. Erros, but things that were done wrong, not the board. I will comment about the board at the end. And if I forget, remind me. The first is 91A and my big $4,000 request. Wow. Why did I do that? I made dual requests and I've told you this twice, I'm telling you on the third time, to Solomon County and you at the same time. Same request. Instantly, I got a call from Derek, "Herb, when would you like to come in"? I said to myself, "Oh, this really going to happen? I'm going to call this bluff." So I said Friday. I went in Friday. I had about seven inches, maybe eight inches of paperwork. And so at that point, I went through dates and just scanned through just to see if I had the history and et cetera. And I come to the conclusion that I did. So I rubbed my head and said, "Hmm." I went back a second time, scheduled at my convenience. And then I started going right through for the detail and I had it all. So I compare that now to what was done here by the town with my request. 70 days. Now, I let it go. And I built a case because the right to know law makes it very clear, if you've got it readily, you've got to give it to me. And so in my request, there were things that I could have gotten immediately. I didn't get them. 70 days to get something that was a document that you could reach and get. So I had it. To put it short, I had it. I had you. So what I'm going to ask you to do tonight is I'm going to ask you to rethink what you do with 91A because you were making significant errors. And the reason that you didn't pick that up, I do not know. But it was my job to teach you. It was my job to show what this man was and was not doing. So now I'm going to ask you to pass these around this way so each one of you sees them. That's a right to know request that was made by a citizen. Now, when you ask for a right to know request, what do you want to know? Do you want to know who the attorney is? Yeah, you got that. Do you want to know what the case is? You want the case number. Is it there? Then you want to know the amount of money spent. You don't want to know the criteria in the case, the decision, it's not been made maybe. But when you look at that, how do you ascertain what the dollars were spent for? Pass it along, please, because there's a lot more coming. I can't. One of my fingers don't want to work here, but we'll get that to happen. What information can you discern from what the top person got? And the attorney did this.
They're basically all the same, just past one then. We're just showing you this.
They're all different.
They're all different cases, but they're all showing, just blacked out for the description of services.
So then, oh, what do we have here? Oh, Lord, look at this one, guys. Wow. Is it who's asking?
So this, now this came from where? And this one came from?
A citizen.
Okay. Without, without a cross down, is what you're saying?
Like you see it.
Are these the same documents? As these, were they blacked out?
You mean all one request? Now here's reasonable redaction. There were things that needed to be protected and was done correctly. Was this another lawyer in Johnson or not? Or no? So that being said, yeah, we'll leave that. There's another packet here of the blackouts and whatever. But the point is, no matter what, that is not consistent with 91A. No matter how you look at it. The person, the public, got no answer. So I hope that looking at these drives at home that your, the towns, under the stewardship of Hunter, had no respect for 91A whatsoever. And you think about this being presented to a judge in my particular case, where I got 70 days to get the first document. I never picked it up and I have no intentions of ever picking it up. Because I made a lawful request and the town broke it. And that is actionable in a court of law, period. So, that all being said, it is time that the board began to get more involved with the government, particularly as far as Hunter was concerned. So way back when I made that request, I was already on the scent that things were wrong. And so then I continued to dig. And the more I dug, the more I found. Many of these you were cognizant of. But I want the public to understand, the public listening, and the news media that is kind of like the woke papers today, they won't print the truth, they just print what makes people happy and what they wanna, wanna read and receive. So I wanna bring out all of the wrongs as best as I can and as succinct as I can. I'm gonna start with Coon Brook Bridge. Posted for over a year. Over a year. The municipalities and contractors and people that were, that had to either break the law or avoid and go a long way. Some people went from unity all the way through clamor to get to Coon Brook Road. That is unbelievable. It was posted, even though the state of New Hampshire Department of Bridges, not the Department of Boots, Shoes, Water, Airplanes, the Department of Bridges, gave it a 555. That's the highest rating for a bridge of that size. Wow. How did that happen? Hunter sat there and said, well, maybe it was meant to be up the road. It wasn't up there, Hunter. The law says it is posted at the beginning of the road. So that if you've got a tractor trailer, you don't drive down in a mile and then have to back out or turn around in somebody's driveway. So that was another big hint that something was really wrong. Then came a letter under the town letterhead to New Hampshire DOT that had an absolute false statement in it. I myself called Hennecker and the person had never done a bridge job there. I called the engineer at DOT and he was not cognizant either. So the letter was false. It was absolutely, absolutely outright intentional lie. No one through the entire issue stated, oh, I made a mistake. That being said, those were two pretty big signals that something was rotten. Four. You have an employee complaint that removed Hunter's oversight of that employee and gave it to Mr. Brown, which is still pending. The bus baron eviction notice was not lawful, nor was it legal high ground as Jim stated, quote, unquote. When you give a notice for eviction, there's a statutory process. Paperwork actually made for you that you have to fill out. That wasn't done. Writing a letter saying, get out, doesn't work. It's unlawful from the get-go. But that being said, even if you had considered it as a board, what were you told that motivated you to do that? The right arm fighting the left arm and all of the people are in between. But without being held to the facts of the situation, which were, we had a current year budget without money in it and we'd already had our new budget approved. So the timing was atrocious. There really was no meeting of the minds to come forward with this travesty. And so, at that point, I get pissed, quite frankly. And decided. So I laid out a plan and went through and we were successful. But isn't it successful to do this? But you and he brought us there. You created your own issue. And there was a rebellion, let's put it that way. So now, I've got even more clues. Wow, things pretty bad here. Then we've got the CTE land swap. He gonna, gonna take care of that. In May. He knew it was not possible. We were not told. The clock is ticking for us and we were not told. Why were we not told? I should think this hand would tell the left hand that it ain't gonna work. Nope. Well, I guess, at that time, you got his ass handed to him in the vote on the bus baron. And so probably he wasn't in an amicable mood. So then we have the law books leaving the room with no explanation from you or him as to why and what for. Why they left the room? They were a resource. If it was money, it's really not money. Because the books stay, there's only about maximum three books are traded per year. So you might get one book and you get all the supplements. So it's easy to keep up. It's a long line, yes. But when a question comes up here in the room, planning board, zoning board, or any other board, it was a good resource. It was here, up to date. Where did it go? Where did it go? If it costs now to get in a couple of thousand dollars to get into that as a library, where did it go? Did it go to the library? Can someone answer that question? Did it go to the dumpster? Can that question be answered?
I don't think anybody here knows.
Did it go to somebody's home? Okay. So that's another, just making more points. Now in my particular case with the town that I explained to you already, the immediate things that I did not get, that within five business days, he had to tell me what I was gonna get and what I didn't. And at the end of the five business days, I was told 70 days. So I had to make a decision on whether to do it, put it in the court, easy case to win, easy case to win, real easy to win. No matter how you look at it, he was wrong. I didn't do it. And then, as things continued to happen, I said, wow, this board have to take an action. And had to stop allowing him to either mislead you or not communicate to you, or whatever. Because I do not think that you are bad people. But I think about the fellow who took all of those people to South America and then got them to drink the Kool-Aid. How in hell did they follow him? And how did they drink it? All of them. How does, how does Putin decide to invade a country without the people? Is he right in doing so without the Russian people voting and allowing to do it because he, he can do it? So now we come to Spring Street project. You were all handled, except for Jeff, because he didn't attend. You had a 10:30 meeting one morning and I handed each one of you a copy of the letter that was in fact CC'd to the town lawyer. But yet, you people had not had it. Am I correct on that statement?
Correct. And neither had the lawyer.
So how sad that is that the attorney didn't immediately turn around and CC it to the board. And why didn't he? Board, he would not make that decision on his own. The community is his client. He would not have made that. Somebody had to tell him, no. Anybody here tell him no?
Clarification.
No, I'm on, I wanna finish completely.
But you were just told the attorney did not have a letter, so how could he decide not to send it to us?
He was CC'd, he was CC'd on that letter that I handed out, that I gave to the four of you.
I just wanted to interject, and I know you're aware of this, that he didn't get it till Paul sent it to him that morning. He did not receive it. He did not, well, he CC'd to him, somehow it never got there. And so Paul sent it to him.
Well, I, I thought of that as possible option, but then the next one rubbed it out. When in fact, the lawsuit was filed, the attorney for the plaintiff called the town attorney, Tangway, and asked if he would accept service. And he was told no. In almost all litigation, this guy suing this guy, their attorneys do that to bypass the service. In many, when you get into, into criminal, probably not. But in, in communities, it is a norm.
No. Not here. I've gotten multiple times the deputy drove up the driveway, handed it to me or put it on my doorknob. I've never gotten served by our attorney saying, oh, you guys were served, here's your copy. You know, I would get a copy and the town clerk would get a copy. The whole time I was getting them was chair, that's the only way this board received them.
Jeff, I would ask you then to call another attorney and ask what it is. It is a courtesy that's done.
Okay. We managed to do it the way we did it.
Well, it, it didn't work well.
The sheriff's right next door, it's not a long trip for him.
It didn't work well for you, did it, Jeff? Because you didn't know about that lawsuit that was, that somebody else already knew, including your lawyer, which are gonna have to defend you. I don't wanna debate with you. I wanna spill my guts and then you guys make your own decision of what's what.
But can you spill one thing for me also? You know, you had that letter, I guess to the state dated sometime in June, that you handed out to us. And you weren't even on a CC for it, you know? So I'm curious as to how you got that. And I guess perhaps how you had a copy of the suit against us before we did, which we just got last Thursday or Friday.
Yeah.
You know
I did get served.
Jeff, I, I don't wanna insult you, but it's none of your fucking business. Right, point blank out.
Okay.
It's none of your business. I get all kinds of things from people who call in, because I've been here so long, doing just this, and they don't wanna come in, they're timid, shy. They, they just don't wanna come here and express what they do. And a lot of them, I can turn around by saying, ah, by the way, they're right, you gotta do this, this, and this.
Okay, so a letter from, I guess, Spring Street attorney to the state, to CC'd our attorney, you got in on the distribution of that somehow. Were you CC'd on that? Nope, that's right, you're not gonna answer, so. But it's just, it's just one of these, you know, mysteries.
And what difference does it make to you, Jeff?
It's just a mystery of life.
Jeff, what difference does it make to you? How I got that? How I got it? If it was, if it was a false letter and I, I
No, I mean, I'm just
And you discovered, and you discovered it?
You're getting notice of us being served and us being mentioned at the state before we even hear about it. It's just one of those mysteries of life, I guess.
Like I said, I bet that hurry gets a mail receipt next time, so he knows when someone's opened it.
Also, I do have to say this, if you told me that. It is in the back of my mind, and maybe somebody can help me bring it forward, that we were asked by Sean Tangway how we wanted to be served. And he gave us two options. One was what you've described and the other was what, how we handled it. And I believe the direction was to have it be served to the chair. Am I wrong in that point?
I don't think you are, I think that was in a non-meeting, but I, I don't think you're far off.
So that, just to help you understand our
Okay, so if you
It could have been wrong, but that's the way we did it.
If you did, if you did say, don't accept service, then, then he would buy by that.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that that's what was said to him, because he, he gave us two options.
So then you wonder why in two meetings, I talked to you about litigation that you didn't have. So when he gets it, when does he get it to you? And how does he get it to you? Or, and, or through the system, the delay? So
I didn't get it till last week. I was served and the clerk was served.
And that's, that's unfortunate. Because what really happened here, the, the most important thing was about the first letter, which said that the project doesn't make it in time for the, the due date, let's say, or the end date, then the town loses $420,000. And so expressed in that letter was, if I don't have water, I'm not complete. And you don't get the 420. So you were 96, you went to 40, and 15 is what other communities were doing.
Went to 66, that's one third.
Yeah. Okay, so you went to 56, and then you went to...
66.
Okay, so 56 is correct, number 40 is not.
Well, I know, we...
Okay, that's all, that's all I need?
Long before Frank's attorneys ever came in here, we, the offer to Frank's and Levita's was, you know, because the state's providing this per unit, you know, grant to us, we would, we would utilize part of that to cover one third of the...
Jeff, if I could just interrupt you, I think we need to be very careful because this is...
Okay.
Yep. That's why you should be listening.
Right, but that's, but that's also something, a motion we made at a meeting, so.
But this is, this is now a legal proceeding, so.
Okay, so from the citizen's point of view, I look at it that not going down to the 15,000 that other communities were charging, that you... It appears to be an attempt to gouge. How do you get from 15, which other communities are doing, to 96,000? And it obviously didn't work. And so, that being said, something was wrong with that. There was, the lawsuit states that there was no support on the website or from the town. So now, you've gotta work your way through that. With, a simple, a simple deal was, and in a conversation with you, Barry, I said, if I take $25,000 from you and I give you $420,000 back, would you make the deal? Everybody that just heard that in this room has already made the decision, yes, they take the deal.
Isn't that Nigerian princess, or is it?
Excuse me?
Let's let him finish. Sorry, Jeff. I've heard that.
So, I see it as just mismanagement in the third degree, just absolutely unequivocally wrong. And to risk that $420,000 over $25,000, or the difference, well, excuse me, 25 plus, you said, so at most, you're talking $30,000, $35,000, is ludicrous. So, you got yourself and, meaning us, the community, in a position where if this project doesn't make it, we lose that amount of money. And I asked you, as a board, to move on the issue and understanding the finances of it, and you did not. And right now, you're gonna stonewall because litigation has been threatened, and you have. When litigation is threatened on a right-to-no request, the person gets 70 days, and the law gets broken. I suggest that there is a way to diffuse the bomb. And that's to come to an agreement. Now, in the facial expressions, I'm gathering that probably you understand, but your hands may be tied. I don't think so. What's, what's happened here is what's tied is up here, that you can't. And has anybody got on the phone and called your lawyer from here and said, hey, we need to know if we, if we go down to $15,000, does the suit disappear? Has someone asked that question? I'm not gonna answer it, I got that. But it was a way to get it done. To get it done. And so, all of these piled together are the reason that on that Monday morning, Mr. Reesberg, now he didn't leave to go on vacation. He didn't leave so that you could hire another person in that position. And he left because of what was improper. And more was to come. So, still time enough to keep the ship in sync. $420,000 is at stake in one decision that you're gonna have to make sooner or later. And if you wait for litigation, you lose. Now, if you have already made a decision, and I'm not cognizant of it, that's okay. I'm not wrong, because I don't know. So, and you won't tell me, or you would have spoke up already. So, I'd like to see it in. I'd like to see leaders here. And I've already made my mind up, out of this board of five, who the leaders are and who the followers are. And that, to me, is really interesting, because if you came here to follow, you ought to lead. If you came here to lead, check, do your homework, and do your job. And that's it. We have a man here that spent countless hours on the striping out here, so important to how people park, particularly with Amazon that you have to compete with now, if you're a retailer, Walmart, you can go buy there and get the stuff. So, if you have a store on Main Street, well, it's really nice to find a place to park if it's convenient. And that, to me, is a leader. So, that all being said, finally, this board has cleaned house. And so, that's a compliment out of all of the, out of all of the garbage and peek your head up just above nowhere and, and say, there's a compliment there. I'm sad about it, it's just so wrong. All of it. It was unnecessary, harmful, and did no good. I do not wish him luck. I do not wish the next community luck that hires him. He did not do us any favors. Thank you for listening. I know you've heard most of it before, but this point was done so that the citizens of this community know that he didn't just step aside so you could hire somebody else. He just didn't move his retirement forward because he wanted to. He moved his retirement forward because the whole house was coming down if he didn't. And I would have made it that way. So, thank you for listening. I'm done.
Thank you. Do you have something you want to say? Anybody else for open forum? Communications, Board of Selectmen.
Okay. I think that I would like to see a better way of advertising our properties that are for sale in this town. I think that we don't do a good job at it. I think that the travesty that the last property sold for what it sold for, I think that there were a lot of people who may have been interested in that property. But when a property goes from $40,000, when homes in this town are gone for a minimum $150,000-ish.
Is this something you've heard from people in town?
I've heard from people in town, people are upset. You know, and I think that I remember milling around, you know, wondering when it was for sale, what it was for, you know, how, what the, isn't, trying to old milling around the website looking for it. And if I was a citizen, not knowing how I'd do that. And that it just seems like now we have another one coming up, that there should be, but I know that you had brought this up as well at one point. It doesn't seem to be quite as clear as maybe it could be or should be. And so, this is just my, just a point that, thank you.
Keith?
I have nothing.
Jeff?
Yep, two things. Yesterday afternoon, there was a service of remembrance for Roy Malu next door at the old courthouse. There were a lot of people there, and a lot of people spoke favorably of him and all the good things he did in town. And one area that was not mentioned, which Jim could probably talk to, as he was a great supporter of the police department.
Yes, he was.
You know, and all the other things he did in town. But it was a nice remembrance of him, so.
Thank you.
Very well turned out. Also, another thing, last week, The Valley News wrote an article about Hunter's leaving, and it was very much a one-sided piece. So, I wrote an editorial, or a letter to the editor, which hadn't been published, probably won't be because it exceeds their wordage. So, I'm gonna read it here. Patrick O'Grady used to be an impartial reporter for The Valley News who covered the events in Newport fairly. But with his two articles about Newport this month, I have to wonder who he is listening to and why. A July 11th article on the retirement of town manager Hunter Reesberg is full of innuendos. The Board of Selectmen voted to accept Mr. Reesberg's letter of retirement effective January 1st, 2024. The board then voted to separate with Mr. Reesberg on July 10th, 2023. Patrick's referring to the fact that Mr. Reesberg, quote, resigned the same position in Hartford, unquote, Vermont, after 19 years, like he did the same thing, like he did the same thing there that he did here. And I hope he, he did the same here. Hartford got a new town office, new athletic complex, new aquatic center, national accreditation of the first responders, stable financial position, and a revitalized White River Junction. Not too bad. You know, what have the six or seven Hartford town managers that followed Mr. Reesberg brought to that community? I was chairman of the Newport Board of Selectmen that hired Mr. Reesberg and was chairman for most of Mr. Reesberg's time in Newport. Mr. Reesberg is a professional who works to carry out the wishes of his Board of Selectmen. He also expects the town staff to perform in a professional manner and work to improve their performance, and work to improve their performance, always with the knowledge and support of the Board of Selectmen. Newport is a better community due to Mr. Reesberg's time here. Everyone's tax bill, bills are lower than they otherwise would be because Mr. Reesberg switched the town's electricity source to solar and locked in minimal increases for 25 years. 20 to 30 Newport children who otherwise would not be able, be able, go to Camp Coniston and grant them each summer due to Mr. Reesberg's effort. Roads, sidewalks, and town buildings are being addressed. Mr. Reesberg has brought about $37 million of grants and donations into Newport addressing infrastructure needs. Funds for projects that will not need to be paid for by the taxpayers include half the cost of the required wastewater treatment plant upgrades and the entire cost of constructing, constructing a new community center. Getting back to Patrick's reporting, quote-unquote, he states that Mr. Reesberg, quote, battled with the school district over the leasing of the bus bar, unquote, no. Mr. Reesberg was acting on the direct direction of the Newport Board of Selectmen who voted at their March 6th, 2023 meeting, uh, meeting to evict the school buses from the highway garage. Mr. Reesberg was doing the job he was given by the Board of Selectmen. At the June 19th, 2023 Board of Selectmen meeting, the board voted to change their position and to work with the school district to keep the school buses in the highway garage. Mr. Reesberg, with new direction from the Board of Selectmen, took part in a joint meeting with school district personnel. As for construction of the new natural science center at Sugar River Valley Regional Technical Center, at the Board of Selectmen's June 19th, 2023 meeting, meeting with school superintendent and individual school members, okay, at the June 19th, 2023 meeting, the school district superintendent and individual school board member stated that Mr. Reesberg was holding up the center's building permits and that he was impacting their construction schedule. A reality check on June 21st, 2023 revealed that the school district and their contractor had not applied for a building permit, but hoped to have one submitted soon. The natural science center is also planned to be built on federal grant-funded recreation land, which requires replacement, which requires replacement, new recreation land be found and developed. This quote-unquote battle also became Mr. Reesberg's responsibility. He's been working with the state to develop a suitable parcel for this. Meeting with all parties was held on July 5th, 2023, and a course of action to resolve the school district's problem was discussed. I keep reading in The Valley News about how Newport has been sued by a developer over some order and sewer fees. But as, but as of when I am writing this, which was last Wednesday, Newport has not been served any papers of this suit. And the, and the sheriff's office is right next door to the town office, and the offices are open all day. Not too hard to find someone to serve. The fees in question were set in 1978, 35 years ago. I find it hard to understand how fees set 35 years ago are the fault of Mr. Reesberg. Other developers, over the years, have managed to pay the fees without problems. I'll leave that.
That's all, yeah. Thank you, Jeff. Jeff?
Yes, I believe everybody on the board received an email from a Baskin Road resident inquiring about the status of the road closure, specifically Witcher Road. So, I didn't have an answer to give to him, Paul, but I know that there was some estimations of a couple of weeks to get this repaired. Can you give the board and the rest of the listening audience an update as far as the, what are we doing on Witcher Road specifically, what the timelines are for the roads that are currently impacted?
Sure, you stole my thunder. The good news is, it's not raining.
That's true. Today, tomorrow's still...
Bad news is, it's supposed to start again tomorrow. Oh, I didn't even think of that. Nice little play on words, huh?
At least tornado, what they were expecting, didn't come.
Yes, that's good, too. That wouldn't help. So, roads in town, we are currently operating on an ambulance in, ambulance out basis. So, road needs to be open for an ambulance to get to any, any house in town and be able to get back out and provide services. So, our first and foremost, we were working on that, to do that. Witcher Road fortunately has access for half of the road from Level 103, the other half from Baskin Road. So, it didn't fall into that immediate case. However, we realize the importance of that road, the businesses up there, and also just the safety of the traveling public. We had an engineer look at it on Friday, and I had a proposal for him for putting together a scope of work that we can then put out to bid, to have a company, it's beyond, it's beyond the town's crew's capability, both equipment-wise and staffing-wise currently. So, that is going to be 911, and I believe the next project on the list, as long as we don't have any more failures due to rain tomorrow. So, but we're still gonna have to pull together that scope of work. So, what I'm hoping is that he can have a scope of work put together in the next few days, by the end of the week. We'll put it out for probably four or five days. And the bid is gonna be a combination of time to get it constructed and low bid. So, if it's, I can do it for $10,000 in October, or I can do it for $15,000 next Monday, I'm gonna recommend the $15,000 next Monday. So, both the time and the, and the dollars will be in that scope of work and that proposed. We'll probably send it to the three main contractors in town who've been working for us, and we'll also list it on the website. We're not gonna go with a regionally posted Valley News kind of bid on this one. We don't have that kind of time. So, that's the plan for Witcher Road. The other roads in town, we continue to make, to look at, maintain. We're also hoping that we're gonna get a FEMA declaration. I think that we're probably gonna start pushing $400 million here pretty quick. We didn't budget that. That would need to be part of year-end holdover. I think that we have some funds that we'll be able to hold over from previous year, so we don't devastate this year's budget. But a federal declaration would be a wonderful thing right now, because we are taking it hard. The roadside, so like I say, we're trying to maintain ambulance in, ambulance out against one plane of traffic. Most roads right now are more a case of soft shoulders. We've got some undermined shoulders that are coned. It's, it's not great, but we continue to work on that. And we've also been on a short crew with Highway. And I'm also your public works director, so.
Been there every morning at 7 o'clock.
Every morning at 7 o'clock. So, that's where we stand on the roads. I don't know if there are other questions about that, but we, we had, certainly Sand Hill Road, we lost the first two storms. We did not lose this last time. Blaisdell Road, we lost in the second and third storms. That's been put back together. Bradford Road, we had, we had a planned culvert replacement, but then we had, that culvert failed. And that's why Bradford Road was closed two or three days ago. And then actually, we had, it sank a little bit, and we had a vehicle problem. Somebody hit it, it sank, and we had some blown tires this afternoon. I understand United went back and filled it in with gravel for a temporary patch, the cone. So everything's passable. And like I say, we've been along the rough edges right now.
Also, I do appreciate the fact that, I've been out to visit, I can never remember, so Keith-
Broder.
Broder. Young man who's trying to keep a business going and having it grow, he's had some hard luck. So people, he did put out signs, Paul asked him to put up some signs, but people were kind of either going by the signs, and then they run into that ditch in Witcher Road, which is pretty, pretty bad. Or they get the GPS sending them up Cuts Road the wrong way, and they, you know, they're supposed to go back around the Unity Road. So what we've done now is put out some detour signs and put his sign in front of it, so that people will know, okay, go, go left, young man, right. So, you know, I, I think he understands we're in a bit of a time crunch, but his business is being hurt, so we're going to move as fast as we can.
Yeah, I just, I'm glad that we can support his business. The biggest reason for the detours is that sending cars over Cuts Road for trucks, I couldn't imagine a big truck going up there, is just a public safety danger, so.
You won't get far. That's all I have.
That's all I had. Well, I've mentioned what I've had, which is conversations with people about roads. I know Jim's been going out, I've been going out, my wife and I actually have been driving around almost every morning now, checking roads, things of that nature. Notice all the cones that are up there, things of that nature.
Picked me up for a couple coffees. There's some scary holes. I was riding my bike, and like the ones you don't expect, I think maybe down by the high school or something, I was driving, I said, whoa.
Yeah.
It was like, like, you know, it wasn't a side of roads, all of a sudden there's a hole this big, and I looked in there, I'm like, that's, like, like you don't possibly know where some of these sinkholes are that you guys, there's the last hole over there. So it's, it is very substantial.
Town manager? Do you have any, sir? You stole my thunder. I'm done.
May I just mention one more thing, is that possible, is that? I do have an observance in town as a bicycle rider, and also as an e-bike rider, which is a pedal-assist bike, that this is going to become a problem. There are now electric motorcycles in town. These are bikes with batteries on them, that have accelerators on them, that don't require pedaling. And they're riding on the sidewalks, 30, 40 miles an hour, jumping curbs. And this is no joke. Someone's going to get very hurt. And I don't know what can be done about this, but there's a big difference between a pedal-assist and a motor and a motorcycle. Okay? Yes, sir.
Architぐslater. James Law.
Also to clarify, there are electric motorcycles, which are motorcycles, and they are registered and licensed, so.
Yeah, like teenagers.
This is, this is registered motorcycle license, full manual.
There is a statute that covers the size of the engine and how fast it'll go, what classification of a bike versus a moped, and what, you know, registration. There's a whole litany of existing laws, but technology has outpaced the legislature at this point. And I think it's something that I would not be surprised to see other communities struggling with similar things.
I've heard that.
But legislation is, is where that would start.
But we do have bicycle sidewalk rules in this town, right?
We do.
Just, just saying that, but they're finding those to be very nice jumps, as I, as it appears to me.
We don't enforce, we don't have the manpower, time to enforce parking complaints and other issues, much less having a cop on Main Street to enforce someone's pedaling on a sidewalk.
Keith?
You're not even allowed to ride your bicycle on the sidewalk, are you?
Not in the compact area of town by ordinance.
I was just going to say, we did have a woman severely hurt middle of last week by an e-bike hitting, hitting her coming out of one of the stores on Upper Main Street.
For me, Keith, then I, to speak from my own experience, it was always hard for me as a police officer with competing harms, because the law said you can't ride your bike on the sidewalk on Main Street. Is it safer to ride your bike on Main Street on the sidewalk or put the six-year-old on the road going down Main Street?
I agree.
So it was one of those things where I got the intent, but I saw the competing harms. So it's, it's a real tricky business, but I think, you know, our ordinance exists as much as that's effective or ineffective, but really the, the technology has outpaced the legislature.
Because I think there's a very fine line, because like I say, I drive an e-assist, which means those bikes cannot go over 20 miles an hour. Some of them actually is downright frustrating, but it just gives you some extra, you know. But these other ones, these ones that are accelerated, they're, they're rear, rear power, only 40 miles an hour, and a teenager can drive them. And they look just like a bike, but they are purely accelerated with no pedaling required. Yes, you're right, right the legislature, I think, because was that accident? Was that, was e-bike or just riding bicycle? E-bike, yeah. I just saw the other day, someone was going really fast around Duckett, and I was like, wow, that's too fast on the sidewalk.
Can I make a motion for non-public?
I am going to allow Burke to speak one more time shortly, if you would.
It would be short, short, two things. The surveillance documents, I don't know if I made that as a 91A request, but they make it at this point, a 91A request.
You did.
Right, and so, and I will, I will accept that from this man without him having to abide by the law to get it to me, get it to me, Paul, when it is convenient for you, with all of the rest, forget the five-day clock, okay?
Well, you always have-
Wait a minute, and I want to go further. Now I'm going to talk about this guy. Three times, three times, he's bailed the school out and brought our finances into some sort of, as good a shape as he could, with the mess that was there. And that cannot be forgotten. And this is the second time he's come in here, in my watching, to bail us out. God is here. Then, oh, yes, the numbers, the honesty, all of that stuff, you, is so hard to find. And, and I don't know how we thank him, I really don't.
Well, we're going to discuss thanking tonight monetarily, so.
The good stuff in non-public?
I'll take a request for non-public.
I think I'm mostly going to non-public under, I'm going to do all four statutes, so bear with me. 91A 3, Section 2 E litigation, RSA 91A 3, Section 2 D real estate, RSA 91A 3 2A personnel, and RSA 91A 3 C reputation.
And a call for roll call vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Not going to yes.
So I will be in attendance, and Attorney Tangway will be here in 14 minutes.